What the orders stand for the pledge of allegiance? Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. To the flag of the United States of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so we're here tonight for the public hearing for the 2025 preliminary budget. I guess let me just go through, before we start on public comment, let me just kind of go through some of the, you know, I guess like a summary of this, which you all should have access to that's up there. So for in the four main operating funds, we have total proposed expenditures of $12,014,665. The total proposed expenditures with special districts, not including fire departments, is $16,133,934. This fully funds essential services for the town. We have no new programs or discretionary additions. This is an, this is an increase of in expenses of $1,219,650. This includes increases in special districts. This also depends on how we settle out with union contracts, but right now this will include where we think we might end up. Major changes to expenses are due to contractual obligations. So between FY '24 and FY '25, employee salaries, which includes everything, um, union and non-union, were estimated to be going up $389,696. Health insurance increases for everyone is roughly $315,958. There's gonna be a projected increase in attorney fees and litigation costs of $50,000. As you know, we have four active lawsuits that we are defending, plus we have a tax sorcery case that is going to trial next fall. The ambulance contract is going up by, it's $128,068. ERS and PFRS contributions are going up by $53,287 and $34,716 respectively. We have increased borrowing costs for infrastructure projects and replacement of vehicles and equipment. When you net out the overall bond costs coming down, but having band costs going up, that nets out at about $85,560. You know, but again, that includes, you know, borrowings for DEC mandated projects in our sewer districts. That includes the Hadsburg drainage project, that includes, you know, all of that. Taxes, the proposed tax rate to pay for these services is gonna be $5.01 per thousand of assessed value. It was $4.78 in 2024. We're staying under the state mandated tax cap this year. The overall, um, tax levy will be $9,965,706. This tax levy will cover 62% of the town budget. This is roughly $5.75 per month for most, for residents with a home assessed at $300,000. So it's roughly $69 a year, $5.75 a month. Special districts will see no increase in FY '25 with the exception of the Cornwall Sewer District 1, which is our largest, that's due to a DEC mandated infrastructure project. We have, we have to do per DEC mandates and consent orders. We are using fund balance and FY '25, we're using $2.3 million in the four main funds. If you include special districts, we are using 2.437 million. Fund balance is covering 15% of total expenses. Non-revenue sources, non-property tax revenues are covering, uh, roughly 3.7 million. That'll cover 23% of the total town budget. Um, just, I guess, just quickly going through, sales tax has been reliable and steady. The mortgage recording tax has been in a downward trend since we saw spikes in, you know, mortgage rates. Court fees have been in a, a, a long-term downward trend. The hotel and tours and facility tax, it's still too soon to see how that's gonna have an impact since it's being rolled out. EV charging stations are generating positive cash flow on a monthly basis of, you know, about a thousand bucks a month. ARPA is no longer available, that, um, all of that had to be expended by the end of this year. And then we do have, in terms of savings, you know, as you are probably aware, we've looked at eliminating, uh, medical, um, you know, insurance for elect, for, um, for part-time elected officials, keeping them for, you know, what we would consider full-time elected officials, starting to phase those out with, you know, anyone whose term is expiring this year would be starting a new term next year or in the future. You'll eventually see updates to the employee handbook that will fully put these into place, but over time, um, we do expect to realize some savings this year and then going forward, we expect to realize, you know, a hundred thousand dollars or so of savings from that. We're also looking at closing, aging, aging and unsafe recreational facilities. We are looking at next year of just keeping the kiddie pool open and, um, phasing out or closing the big pool while we consider the future of the big pool. That will net savings as well. And then, just in terms of, if you look at the last page, you're going to see, you know, how we got to the tax cap calculation here. You'll see what our, you know, what the tax levy required balances, you'll see what our allowed tax cap is, and you'll see that we're roughly $6,146 under the tax cap. I guess, I guess what I just wanna say before we take public comment, I mean, obviously, the biggest chunk of this is gonna be personnel costs. You know, those increases in personnel costs across essentially the Janay Fund, our town, highway and sanitation, um, that includes projected increases resulting from eventual settlement of CSEA and PVA contracts, which expire on December 31st, 2024, and increases for non-union employees. As has been past practice, non-union employees receive the same yearly salary increases as CSE, as CSEA employees do, we were budgeting for that scenario. I think it's fair to say that the county's recently settled contract that awarded 19.5% over five years is going to be close to where we land with our biggest contract. I can't get, you know, really, uh, too much into specifics since we haven't settled that yet. We're still discussing specifics for non-union employees. But I mean, I, I will say on the topic of increases for non-union employees, let me say this. You know, these individuals are, you know, many of whom are managers and department heads, should be paid salaries that reflect skills and knowledge they've learned over the years through education, training and experience, in addition to cost of living increases. So, you know, that's really as much as I can say about employee increases. You know, some of you have asked for, you know, breakdowns, you know, at the, you know, reorg meeting in January, that is when we do an itemized list of, you know, uh, salary increases for the non-union employees. And until those are, are fully negotiated and priced in, we don't know what that is yet. I can't make that public because those are not priced in yet. And so I can tell you what the cost is overall for personnel cost increase. You have it there, $389,696. But that's what I have as far as an overview. So I will open the public hearing up and, so whoever wants to make comments, please, uh, make public comments.
Thank you.
Be sure. How many employees does Cornwall have?
Hopefully a hundred. That's on the regular, we double payroll this summer.
Yeah, cause I, yeah.
Yeah, cause it's rec pool.
Never kind of really even thought of.
Yes.
This is a surprise for me to be at this meeting. In all the years I've lived in Cornwall and the village, I have never attended a budget hearing. But my curiosity was sparked. My name is Bridget Flynn, I live in the village. I'm in, I'm a retired senior citizen, I'm involved with senior citizens and so on. Now, I was asked a question, being that I'm involved with senior citizens and one thing and another, I was asked a question and I didn't know the answer to it. And then I was told, you know, go to your town board meeting, you'll hear it. Okay, so here I am. My curiosity was sparked this morning when I came in, cause I, my computer is no longer working and my cellphone is a very small thing, I couldn't get any information in my home. So I came here and I asked for a copy of the budget and was told that it's on the website over and out. And I said, you gotta be kidding, there's nothing open for the public, for somebody like me? They said, yep, we have it and you can go into the conference room and read it, which is exactly what I did. That was about, I'd say, almost an inch thick.
Sure.
And I said to myself, hey, what am I gonna find here? Will I find the answer to my question in this? I went, I have to tell you guys, I went through every page in that budget, but my memory fails me. So I made some notes of what I found in the budget very interesting to me. I don't know to anybody else, but I made a note. I have the items written down, I know I only have three minutes. I have six items. I may go beyond your three minutes, okay? If I do stop in, I'll come another time for the remainder of what I need to talk about because I'm interested. Now, let me first tell you what sparked my interest. I got a terrible lot of mail, okay, bulk math, a terrible one. And this piece of literature got my, sparked my interest because I'm a senior citizen and I use a senior citizen facility a lot. I go on the trips and, you know, many, many things. That's what started the interest. The thing I was asked was, the question I was asked, thank you. You're welcome. The first question that I was asked, charging stations. In your budget, the amount was $6,000. Was that to install them or is that what they're bringing in?
It's revenue for next year.
Excuse me?
Revenue, it's revenue, expected revenue.
Expected revenue?
Yes.
It's just expected, it's not costing us $6,000 just yet. You happened to mention tonight about charging stations. I didn't get the full char, your full, what you said because I have a hearing problem. What was it you said in reference to the charging station on your preliminary?
I said that right now they are showing positive cash flow on a monthly basis after we, um, the, the charging rates are set so that we're getting roughly three and a half or four times what the per kilowatt hour charges and so.
And how much is that?
So we're paying roughly nine cents a kilowatt hour and we're charging somewhere around, I mean, don't quote me on the exact 27, 28 cents a kilowatt hour and we're bringing in, we're netting somewhere around a thousand dollars a month after we're paying for the electricity.
A thousand dollars after the electric, how much was it to install them?
So it cost about $45,000, of which we are getting about $30,000 back from Central Hudson. We're still working on those other state and federal programs that we're submitting for to get reimbursed for the remainder, but we had to first get the Central Hudson first and then see what didn't fit and then come back for the rest. So we expect to get very close to the full amount to pay for them and if not, if for some reason it doesn't happen, it'll maybe take a year to recoup the rest. And then after that, we'll be, you know, fully, so overall, I, I think it has been good overall.
My next question in reference to that is, why did the town, the municipality, take on these charging stations? When throughout Orange County and Vale's Gate, there are lots of charging stations? Why did the town take this on?
Where at Vale's Gate?
That's the question I'm being asked.
Where, where in Vale's Gate are you?
Excuse me?
Where in Vale's Gate are, are they in the charges?
All the restaurants, you go to, most of the restaurants and they have them. In Newburgh, they have them everywhere. I've gone in an electric car and only one of my friends has an electric car. So I'm just curious, this is all curiosity on my part.
I thi, I think it's probably best if we just get through all your questions and then I can come back and answer them after we get through your questions.
Please, can, you can't, how much, you said 45,000 to install? And you got half of that money from Central Hudson?
Okay, this isn't a back and forth, so I think we need to have you ask the rest of your questions and then I'll come and I'll answer them.
Okay.
This is, this is a public hearing.
Okay, that's one, that's, let me look at my card. There are six questions here. In the budget that you had this morning, I think that's it you have there, there's a refund in there of $46,000. What is that for? Where does that come from and what do you do with it?
You have to tell me what line it's from, I couldn't just tell you ran.
It says in the budget, it's not, it has a number, I took the number down. Okay, as I say, I've never come to a meeting before. Okay, refund has a number of 82701. And the next question is, okay. Yet in your budget, you have a sale of scrap of, I don't have an amount. What do you mean sale, is that, what, what are we talking about when we say sale of scrap? And what do you do with that money? Where do you allocate it to go once you get it?
It's just recycling through sanitation, all, all recycling.
I'm only concerned about where the money that you get for that, where do you allocate it?
That's good to next, that's good four, five and six years.
Okay. Can I go to the next question?
Yeah, yeah, it's good all the questions, yeah.
Farmers market.
Sure.
You're in the budget and that budget you have in front of you, $6,000. Is that by month or by the year?
Year.
Year.
By the year. Are we paying that or is the farmers paying that?
No, the, the vendors pay, that's the money received.
That makes me a little happy. Okay, now you have veterans services. What services do you provide to our veterans? I need to know, that's an important question for me. What services because?
Really come to ask for, whenever they come, if they have a special request, greet things, go for them, when they put wreaths for Memorial Day, veterans stay on the lawn.
Well, we have a lot of veterans here in Cornwall, we do the, the lesion and all the others and we did a replanting and resurfacing, all that stuff. But this cost, the, the cost was a lot. Next question, credit card system is $65,000. Does everybody have a credit card in the town, uh, administration? Or is it just one individual? It's in your budget?
Credit card system?
Credit card, that's what's called credit card system, $65,250. It's in, it's in your budget and it has a number. Do you want the number?
Yes.
Wonderful. Let me get it. Am I holding you up?
No, it's fine, he's just finding the mustard, it's okay.
Okay. Let me give you a number, credit card system, here we go. Uh, B, 3394. Okay.
New York State Grant Scan Card System.
Oh, the scan card system, yes.
Okay, now the next question, this is the last and only. I was concerned about your bonds and how high the interest is on it and the bonds that you have. And what you, and you said something about it during the preliminary. Grant money, you pay a lot out to grant writers. Are the days of volunteer grant writers gone?
Those days.
Which is what I, I remember.
Yes, those days are 100% gone now.
Yeah, 100%, and get a lot of money.
So when you're writing complicated technical grants or require engineering.
Well, I know what, I know what the details, I know, I just, it's the amount of money that we are spending, we're trying to save money.
We spent $10,000 on grant writing and we brought in more than $14 million in two years.
Yeah, but you have, it's not free money, dear, you have to pay that back.
The grants?
It's not free money, okay?
How are we paying the grants?
Your bonds, your bonds. I mean, that's, I mean, it's very high, your interest and everything is very high.
Of course.
Anyway, those are all my questions and my concerns and I want you to know that that really sparked my interest so much that now, um, I'm not gonna be a politician or run for office, I'm 86 years old. I live alone, I run my own house and I do everything myself.
God bless you.
So first, first budgetary in all of my life. So I'm very, you know, very interested about all these and my treatment is more than enough, okay?
Sorry, your curiosity is appreciated.
Thank you all for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I can, yeah. All right, um, is there anybody else? Yes?
Um, I wanna first state that I wholeheartedly support benefits and competitive wages for our employees, um, in all the departments. I was, it was very disappointing however, to see that the estimated increase this year for the supervisor and council positions is a 6% increase. And that's my point of view, is that this is more community service than a 6% wage increase. I was back and forth, and I know the town council knows this, with, with Josh, about, trying to just get an, an idea of what percentage the non-union people would be getting. I kinda got, I don't wanna say the runaround, but I got kind of like a circular talk. I understand, I fully understand negotiations for my many different positions that I've had through the years, both in my employment and volunteer. But I think of this being a public hearing in the town budget, yet that's not figured in. I find that concerning.
It is figured in, that number.
It is.
Okay. And will non-union, not department heads, um, see the same equal across the board for all, not higher for some and lower for some, and you don't have to answer that. But all those positions that were approved at the reorg meeting, I did go back and look at that as you suggested to do, um, I would hope that there's not someone on that list that's going to get an exorbitantly high increase while everyone else who works equally hard is getting a different increase. So, and that's it, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
Thank you, how are you? My comments are, are not criticism, but I do have an inquiry. I, I asked at the one budget work session regarding Cornwall Sewer, that's where my questions are. You were kind enough to get the information to me on the breakdown and all. But the numbers don't add up, you know, it's, I know it's a little complicated, but the numbers don't add up and so if I could just inquire about a couple of things and see what we can find out. You know, for example, I asked and Pam sent me the email. Total debt service that's in the budget for Cornwall Sewer is $481,300. So I asked at the budget work session for a breakdown of the debt service. And the reason being that the village pays for that service, capital improvements for the plant. And the residents in the town of Cornwall that are in the Cornwall Sewer District pay their share of the plant, but they're also paying for the INI project inflow and infiltration for the sewer collection system, which is part of the $481,000. So Pam gave you the breakdown, it says that the capital plant work is $187,468 of the $481,300. That, the capital part of it, and I'm gonna jump around a little bit, but just see if we can figure out what the, what the exact, Cornwall real property, sewer real property, then there's a line O and M real property. So the Cornwall sewer real property is the capital, that's for the capital part of the taxes. And there's a little difference, this capital line, and this would be for town property owners that would get taxed this, this amount. But there's a little discrepancy in the number on the budget for revenue for the capital sewer has $120,583. And Pam's number for the, for the capital for the plant is $187,468. So when you break out a third of that, $62,489, the capital charge that's gonna go to the village and the two-thirds for the town, so that's $124,973. So there's some discrepancy, I don't know what that is. Also, the question that I would have with the same thing is, the capital for the INI and inflow and infiltration for the collection system that's only in the town, serves the Cornwall residents in the Cornwall Sewer District, that's $293,832. So that makes up the total of $481,300. So my question, one question I have is, where is that $293,832? Because it's not in the capital line. My guess is it's in the O and M line? Okay, but that's not O and M.
You have to talk about the IMA, that's Dylan, D I M A.
Well, the only reason I'm saying, the capital should be for the town, should be the $124,000 and change, plus the 400, or excuse me, 293,832. Why is that important? Unless I'm wrong, I've been out of, out of the business a few years. But if I'm not mistaken, the Cornwall sewer real property, which is for the capital part of it, the, um, total assessments that the taxpayers should pay towards that include exempt properties as opposed to non-exempt properties. So in other words, everybody in the district pays towards the capital improvements. So there's a different difference in the assessments. For the sewer capital, it's, the assessed value is $350,723,508. For the O and M, it's considerably less, $286,353,025. So that, that number, and again, look it all over, I know it's a lot of information.
Yeah, I mean, the role, I checked with Kitty, the role is the same with the part, the one, the capital portion, so it doesn't roll, not the values, but the properties in them.
Well, on the assessed value.
But we are, you're working with the IMA, you're IMA, right?
Yeah, I was gonna say, so really, I mean, this is. Yeah, I was gonna say, so really, I mean, this isn't gonna get worked out before we adopt the budget. We're currently have both, we have town legal and village legal looking at, at the IMA with the village and we're in discussions over it, and I mean, again, we're not, we're not, this isn't gonna get, this is a discussion the board is having as far as, you know, but this is gonna concern the IMA.
No, but, but this affects the taxpayers, don't mean to be bottom line.
Yeah, you're just transferring money from one line to the other, you're thinking more has to be one than the other.
Well, yeah, no, I'm, I'm not saying that the numbers, the total.
Yeah. The totals, right, the numbers are there, the breakdown, no, you're saying there's a difference.
But the breakdown. The breakdown is different, the breakdown, right.
You're saying there's a difference.
And the difference is three hundred fifty million plus for the assessed value that pays for the capital versus two hundred eighty-six that doesn't include exempt properties that pay the O and M. And the other thing's gonna bring me to, I mean, I'll cut right to the chase, is the, the revenue from the village, and again, gotta be fair. I think with the IMA, so I'm gonna say, when you guys get talking about the sewer, that IMA is almost sixty years old. Whoever, the lawyers that did it, they had a magnificent crystal ball. Because if you break down that sewer contract, it's just as accurate today, based on what they projected, as it was when they did it. In other words, the one-third allocation, and then metering the flow that comes from the village and they come up with a percentage. But that's the other, one question I have before I get to the bottom line, what, what is the village?
You'll see the difference if they, the village does an INI on their own systems.
Well.
Big difference.
That was gonna be, that was gonna be, so that was my next question was, usually, in, over the years, the, the village share of the O and M for the amount of flow that goes to the plant, anywhere is between thirty-four and thirty-eight percent.
Yeah, it's, it's way lower.
Generally. Right.
Because they haven't, they need to do their INI.
We, we.
No, well, well, what, what percentage are you using Pam, do you have that percentage yet?
Thirty.
Okay, so you're saying the village flow is less?
Yes, it's been less, it's, it's been declining.
Okay, that's totally contrary to what we should be seeing. Again, not, but this is important because it's a lot of money, and I'm gonna tell you, there's, there's a difference here. If, if the town's been flowing, if the village has been flowing thirty-four to thirty-eight percent a year, okay? And that's what they've been paying it based on. If the town just spent seven million dollars on an INI project to tighten up the town's collection system.
We've.
So that water doesn't get into the sewer system and go through the plant. The village actually, should, just the opposite be happening, the village should be, turn out to be a higher flow because the town flow, if, unless we wasted seven million dollars. If, if that flow from the town didn't drop, then we wasted seven million dollars. But if it worked, the town is putting, in the end, is putting less flow into the plant. The village hasn't changed because they haven't done anything to their collection system.
So what I would say about this is we, this is all part of a future discussion of the IMA, yes. The village should look at their collection system, and we are the ones that hold the speedies permits for this, and you know, we're the ones that, that have to deal with this, and so that is gonna be all part of a discussion because we are, there is a legitimate concern that either, you know, stormwater's getting in or sewage is getting out, and, and, and so but we can't, I mean, I can't talk in the abstract about it.
Are you talking about the village?
Yes.
Okay, and I, I don't disagree with it Josh, I, I'm only trying to contain because based on my numbers that I use, and I use thirty-six percent for the village flow, because it's always been between thirty-four and thirty-eight. If, if, if the breakdown is done correctly, and the capital actually goes on a line where tax exempt properties are paying towards it, a town resident that's assessed for three hundred thousand dollars in the Cornwall sewer district, based on what you have in here projections, would be paying a thousand, twenty-eight dollars and fifty-two cents. Under the calculations that I've done, that should, that charge for them should be a hundred forty dollars or less. Eight hundred eighty-seven dollars and eighty-two cents. So there's a combination of things that work here, but I think, and I hope you'll make it public, let's find out what the actual numbers are of the plant. Let's, let's have a gallant breakdown. I, I find it hard to believe that we spent seven million dollars to tighten up our collection system and our, our flow has gone up and the villages has gone down. It's just the opposite of what it should be, so there's definitely something wrong.
We're, we're definitely gonna have a discussion, but I mean, we're not gonna resolve this before the budget's due to the state. Or, I'm sorry, to the county, so.
No, but you can certainly take what allocation should be in the capital part of the budget and put it in the capital line so that the exempt properties are paying for it, number one.
Right.
And number two, I hope that, again, I mean, I see this in a public meeting, I, I hope that an analysis can be put together on the flow, because I find it absolutely hard to believe that the village has dropped down from paying, from thirty-four to thirty-eight percent use, down to thirty percent. I find that, it's hard to believe.
Yeah, so on that issue, we agree, and that's why we're looking at it, but it, it, it's gonna, it is a larger question that's gonna, again, the, the town attorney is looking at, we're in discussion, and we agree, there is something there that has to be looked at. I mean, we're, we've just finished with, you know, our INI project. And so there, there needs to have been some time for analysis, and so we've gotta look at that and see what those final numbers are after everything's been done, and then we have to get into it with the village. But this is definitely on our to-do list.
Right, but, but the problem is, you can't, you, you've gotta have more information, that you believe is concrete information, before you can charge, overcharge the town residents for sewer. And that's what's gonna happen, if this isn't done before you adopt this budget, that's exactly what's gonna happen. You're gonna wind up overcharging the town property owners in the sewer district, and that's just not right. It's not hard to get the numbers from KMO, they've got great records, they're a fantastic company. But I think you gotta bring these numbers in, analyze them, and see how you went from thirty-four to thirty-eight percent usage in the village down to thirty percent when we did our INI and the village hasn't done anything. So before you adopt this preliminary budget, you owe it to the Cornwall sewer.
We have. We did this based on KMO's numbers, and that's, and so this budget's based on KMO's numbers.
So, the village flows, KMO does it.
Yes, yes, the village's flow, yes, so that's how we got to this number, was KMO's numbers.
Can you ask KMO to put together a report on the flows, the last year, this year? So that we can see, I mean, I, I'd like to see it, that, that, how, how they can, listen, if the numbers are the numbers, I mean, the meters are working, they don't lie. But I just can't see how this, these numbers could drop from thirty-four to thirty-eight percent a year, down to thirty percent when we spent seven million dollars on our collection system.
Been like that for the last couple of years.
So, well.
Two years it's been thirty.
It's been, it's, it's been multiple years that it's been.
I mean, let me, let me, let me ask this then, could you ask KMO to provide the information for the past three years? On the flows, so that.
We believe that we have solid numbers here, and.
Are we already in possession of the numbers?
Yeah, I have the numbers that they, they give to get the thirty percent.
And do we have those numbers for the preceding three years?
Yeah.
Are we in possession of those?
Yeah, I mean, that, that's what we've based the.
Hmm, okay. So, I, I think that it's, it would be a foil request specifying what you're looking for, cause it sounds like we're in possession of it.
Mm-hmm.
So if you just write an email, or however we normally do it, so the clerk can track the workflow. I know it's annoying to hear the word foil request, but it's really important, I think, for our clerk to be tracking the workflow and the foil requests that come in, so that we have an understanding of the, the amount of work that's coming out of the clerk's office, so.
It's not a big deal for me.
No, I know, I've just heard it before here, not, not from you, but.
This, this information should be made public, not just for Dick Randazzo through a foil.
Right, so you would prefer it to be on the website at some point?
No, I think, let, let's have a, let's have a written report put out, that, then I can foil a report with all the breakdowns of it. But I, I'm just saying, something is not right.
I under, I understand, I understand what you're saying, absolutely, I, I absolutely understand your point.
Right, and by not, you gotta put the capital in with the, I mean, cause now, we're talking big money here. Before it was, it was very little capital for, for years. Not only that, Josh, you mentioned a couple of months ago, that you're looking probably almost ten million dollars for phase two of the plant. So we're talking about a lot of money that's gonna be paid by town and village residents. So all that I'm asking is, let's get a three-year overview of what the flows have been, and what the percent of the village is each of the past three years.
Okay, just for clarification, um, is, is it your point of view, Josh, that that part of the discussion is encompassed in the discussion with, about the IMA and whether or not we need to revise it, or something else?
That is part of that discussion.
The entire discussion.
It is gonna be about, the, the IMA is gonna, when we open it up, we're gonna have to get into the, the flows and, you know, we're gonna have to look at, cause IMA dictates, dictates percentages that are paid, who's responsible for capital costs and.
No, I understand, I think that's what, what we're following, I think that's what Pam is following right now.
Who's responsible for plants, yes, so.
Might be changing.
And so the past, the past, the budget every year is done with the information that we get from KMO based on flows and the percentages that we expect to receive.
That we build the village.
Yes, that we build the village.
For their flow.
And we've, we've been putting this together the past couple of years and prior, you know, this is how we do it every year.
Okay.
So.
How long, Pam, how long is, have we been doing it like this, or was it, has it become different because of the DEC requirements and the capital projects that we engaged in?
Well, the, the breakout has been the same all along, but there is a lot more debt service that, with them you've ever had, obviously, since stormy season phases.
Right, and so.
So it could, there could be a difference, but there could be also a difference in the amount of percentage that the village is gonna be paying to, through the IMA, there could be a higher percentage.
Josh, do you have a timeframe on when the IMA is gonna be completed?
Well, no, the, the attorneys are currently looking at it, and there's also been recommendation that we bring on special counsel to look at, you know, the IMA, because that is a, that is a specialty, and so that, you know, so obviously, we're, we're looking at that, but I mean, Steve, this was something we were gonna start going into in closed session, cause it doesn't involve a, you know, IMA, and there are legal concerns here, and so we have to, I mean, this will be a, you know, closed session discussion with counsel.
If I'm understanding what Mr. Randazzo is saying, just follow me and make sure, okay. So it sounds like the concern from Mr. Randazzo is that based on the numbers that he's generated, that perhaps the town residents may be over, be overcharged for the sewer, am I correct?
Yes.
That's because there's a lack of inclusion of the tax exempt, I'm just, I wanna.
Okay, I'm, I'm not done yet, but. Right, the tax exempt, right.
That's part of it, there's two parts to it, that's part of it.
There's two parts, okay, okay.
Okay, tax exempt.
Okay, because of.
I, 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 right.
Obviously the assessments are higher for the rural capital.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm also finding it a little bit, um, concerning that here we are in the middle of the budget predicting what, you know, what this is going to be, and now we're talking an IMA and, you know, maybe changing it, and we could either be increasing or decreasing, you know, the use, and I, I just.
The number, the number's gonna be the same, it's just gonna be a transfer of, one's gonna be higher than the other in that line.
For which particular?
The, the bottom line number is the same.
Okay.
It's not changing the budget at all.
No, what I'm saying.
The town is broken out.
Yes, house broken out, there's one line that's gonna be more than the others.
Okay, I, I just. Again, I'm trying to interpret what was being said.
Yeah, it's just one line, there's, right, so the budget numbers are, the fi, they're the, the same and not gonna change. There could be just a, a transfer of line items, and that's.
Yeah.
Right.
I, I guess I'm asking the bigger question is that we're in the middle of setting, settling a budget for this year, and now we're talking about changing an IMA that's been in place since the sixties.
Well, well, that's, but maybe to.
No, that's, that is not what we're.
Okay, well, that's why, clarification.
What we were talking, what we were talking about, and we have actually, and you know this, and we have said that we are looking at based, we looked at the water, now we're looking at sewer, we dug up the IMA that's really old, and Steve has started looking at it, and we didn't, you know, we did the INI. And we've, you know, and we have, and we've seen that there's a trend where it's going down, partially which prompted me and Tim and others to start looking at, you know, the IMA. And so we know that it's old, and again, I can't talk too much about it because legal is looking at the IMA. And so, once we've had a closed session discussion on the IMA and what counsel has found, I, I, again.
Right, but I, where, I, I, I don't mean to be beating this, but what I'm saying is we're also now getting into phase two, so we're talking more investment that is going to be made, more debt. I just, I'm just concerned like why we're even going down this.
I mean, look, the IMA wasn't looked at for any of the previous supervisors for decades, so, I mean, you know.
But why now, I just.
Well, I think the, the initial, from my understanding, the initial discussion about the sewer IMA came about alongside with the dis, the discussion about the water. So when we started talking about the water, the village formulated the committee and all of that thing that's going on. The question became, if the village is charging the town people for water, is that a fair charge? How are they doing it, how are they coming to the numbers? Okay, so if the village is charging the town people for water and the town is charging the village for sewer, is that fair? Are we being fair to the village, or is the village paying their fair share of our sewer obligation?
Well, right, and that had no say, we had no say.
That was in, and it was a very, it was a very macro discussion, and it's, it's sort of spurred on this idea that we should take a look at the IMA, because it's, while it wasn't as old as a nonexistent water one, it was older, and we have to consistently review and ask, ask the question, is it a fair delineation of responsibilities and resources? It is, it is very lens pulled back at this point, I think the discussion has gone as far as, hey, legal, can you take a look at this IMA that's sixty years old, and that's about it. The numbers that Dick is talking about are, have really nothing to do with the revision of the IMA. Has everything to do with the distribution of the liability um, that's facing the town based on the capital improvements, and where those liabilities should lie, and how they should be spread out.
Let me just digress from, if you give me two minutes.
Which is easier than talking about an IMA.
No, I, I just want a minute to talk about, because it is important. And, and I want you to have all the information so that taxpayers in Cornwall only pay their fair share, and that the village only pays their fair share. The IMA, you know, in my opinion, you don't need an expert lawyer, it's real simple, okay? When the IMA was done, the plant was built, they had one point five million gallons of total capacity. They allocated five thousand, five hundred thousand for the village's purposes, and a million for the town's purposes, one-third, two-thirds. So based on that, they said, okay, the capital cost of the plant and any capital going forward, it's gonna be based on that one-third, two-thirds, the village pays one-third of the capital, that's part A. Part B is the operation and maintenance, okay, that's the other part. So what they agreed was, they put a meter, metering all the flow going in for both the town and village. They put a separate meter on the village line, simple math. You take, you see what the total is, you see what the village flow is, you subtract that from it, and you come up with how much, what percentage, it's always been between thirty-four and thirty-eight percent. Which to me ironically, when I said before, I think these lawyers sixty years ago had a crystal ball. Because they broke out the allocations at five, at one-third, two-thirds. Ironically, all these years, the O and M has broken out to almost exactly that, thirty-four to thirty-eight percent, a little over one-third. So the village flow, the village has been using one-third of the plant for O and M, basically, a little more than that, and the town's been using two-thirds. So those two numbers track, they're the only things you gotta deal with, anything other than that, you're gonna have a problem, I'll be honest with you. Because this has been fair for sixty years, nobody's losing out, the, the village is only paying for what they're using. If the village was one with ten percent, that's what they would pay for the O and M. You know, and that's, it's that simple really, so, I'm hoping that, you know, you don't go crazy with the, with the IMA because it, it's simple, it's easy to read, a layperson can figure it out and do a little bit of math. Thank you very much, I just hope these numbers get.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, yeah, the total, like I said, the totals are the totals.
The, the bottom line totals are correct.
The budget can be adopted, looking into changing it by the twentieth of November to just.
Exactly, so.
That, that is the, the goal.
Goal, yeah, yes.
All right, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there, is there any other questions? I'm sorry, um, public comments?
Which turned into questions.
Is there further public comments? No? Okay, um. Yeah, yeah, so if I could get a motion to close the public hearing on the preliminary budget.
Second.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Is that on the right?
Yes, Ms. Michael Ratzke.
Yes, Mr. Wojtkowski.
Yes. Okay, so, so we have until the twentieth to.
Yeah, to see if we have to make any adjustments.
Yeah, alright, so what I would ask we do is, um, we, we, we adopt the preliminary and give us time to look into making changes to, if we have to make changes, this is gonna take time.
Right.
To do this, but I think we should, we should, the numbers don't change, it's just gonna possibly change the, the lines.
The O and M and the capital.
And the, yeah, so let's adopt, so if we could adopt the preliminary, and then we will take a look at this stuff. And the, yeah, so let's adopt, so if we can adopt the preliminary, and then we will take a look at this stuff.
Josh, you can't adopt, you, you can't adopt it, because you're, you're basically setting the rates when you adopt it.
No. Right.
I, I mean, you can resolve this thing by the twentieth, and then you can put accurate numbers in there before you actually vote on it. I'm not telling you how to do it, I'm just telling you that you've gotta adopt the budget, and that's the way it's gonna appear.
Forgive us, but public comments have been closed now.
Well, I would think you wanna hear some facts that might be helpful.
Why don't we, so, why don't we do this, why don't we go into, um, you know.
So if we adopt the, let me ask a question, if you don't mind, if we adopt the preliminary budget,
Yeah, sure. Yep.
to what extent can you amend the budget before the final budget goes in order to address this issue and a couple other issues that have been brought to our attention?
Um, you can amend it up, so if we don't make any further changes, the preliminary becomes the final budget. If, but we can amend it right up until, you know, we submit it, so essentially, this gives us the opportunity, so if we, you know, nothing is final until we send it to the county. So it's, so look, if the board, if the board wants to make changes to this, we can, but we don't know that we're gonna need to make changes to this. So I think we're kind of, you know, in my mind, we, we accept the preliminary, and we look into it, and then we adopt the final after we've, you know, looked into this, if there needs to be changes, I think that's.
And when, when did you expect that we would be in a position to adopt a final?
Well, it has to be by the twentieth.
Right, okay, so, either the twelfth or the nineteenth.
By the twentieth. So, right, this is the seventh.
Yes.
And, and so adopting the preliminary, Pam, what does that do for you in terms of helping you along on your timeline to make sure everything is forwarded? So we could adopt or not adopt today, if we could make it the twelfth, that would be okay for you too? Or does, does not adopting the preliminary now do something to your planning?
No, it doesn't do anything to my planning, but it just, you know, I just, we're gonna be looking into seeing if any, if those two numbers need to be adjusted.
Okay.
At all.
And that's it?
That's it.
Okay.
So we have the twentieth to do that.
Okay, so we could adopt the preliminary, and then we could revisit it on the twelfth?
Um, I'm, I'm.
Twelfth, nineteenth, whatever, yeah.
Twelfth, nineteenth, which is.
But I'm, but I guess my question is, what is the, what is the function of adopting the preliminary if we're going to adopt a, a final?
What is the advantage?
That's a good question.
Yeah, or disadvantage, right, does it matter?
I mean, look, if you guys wanna keep it open till, you know, wait on the preliminary until, you know, until the twelfth.
Yeah, why don't we put this on the workshop, um, agenda, um, Tim will be back, which is good.
Well, that's only leaves tomorrow.
Right, so you have a day, and then you can dig in and sort of see whether or not these lines change, if at all, um, and then we'll see you Tuesday.
Yeah, and the only other comment I have is, I, there, there just, there just seems to be a lot of moving parts, and, and we could agree on that. And, um, you know, I, I know we can't talk about the salaries, the contract, and all those other things, but again, these are other moving parts, um, that really haven't been decided, set in place. Am I correct?
Right.
I can't, I can't talk about it, I know that, but.
We, so we are, we are going to have.
Uh, it's called voting on the, but, uh, the, the contract, that's what I'm trying to say.
We are gonna have, we are gonna have to adopt the budget without.
Without settling the contract.
Without having, without having both contracts signed and in place, and we have a very good idea.
With even the C S A, okay.
Yeah, I love it.
Yeah, that's not very good either.
It's not gonna be very good, 'cause they have to vote on it.
It's not.
They have it, and they're discussing, okay.
I mean, this, this happened, the contract expires on December thirty-first, and, you know, the others, I, I mean,
I'm, I'm comfortable. Right, they have time.
you know, we have a, they don't have a fixed timeline on when they have to accept it, but we have, you know, New York State guidelines on when the budget has to be done, so, I mean, those timelines aren't gonna like match up, unfortunately.
Done.
So, we, we have to make our best.
I, I mean, I'm, I'm comfortable with, with submitting a final budget
Yeah.
without knowing the finality of our, of our contract negotiations, I think that's something that we have planned for, we have budgeted for, um, and I think that we, we've all worked very hard, the people are working on the contracts directly, worked very hard to try to get to something that is fair and consistent with, um, other contract negotiations and their settling, so that we can avoid litigation. So I think that in that respect, we're doing fine, and that while that might not shake out exactly, I think we're, we're close enough that it will, it will not disrupt what we're doing, so I feel comfortable with that.
Right.
I do want to hear from Pam, once she's had some time, to look at the, the issue that Dick has brought up.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I, I would like to at least speak to you about it probably tomorrow, and then maybe on Tuesday before the meeting, the workshop, so that I understand that issue better, and how the numbers play um, for the taxpayer, once, where, wherever you end up settling out in terms of being in compliance with the IMA, and being in compliance with the rules of being the comptroller. So, um, I think that deserves a couple of extra days, okay?
Mm-hmm. For sure, so we're doing this on the twelfth.
The twelfth, so if you could add, if you don't mind, Josh, to add it to the workshop on the twelfth.
Yes, it is.
Um, so that we can revisit it, and I think it's important for Mr. McCarty to be here too, so.
Thank you. Cool, I agree with you a hundred percent.
Yeah, okay.
Nope, um, okay, so if there is no further questions, then I guess we're here, we're at the end now. Um, do we, does the board feel needs to go into executive session to discuss any of this, um, before we adjourn?
Don't think so.
I, I don't need to, no, okay, no, thank you.
Okay, public comment?
Josh, the only thing I, I will say, just in the end, and hopefully you, I think not adopting the budget is a smart strategy, because you may wind up, I don't know, but if you adopt this preliminary budget, it's an adoptive budget. And if you wanna change that adoptive budget, you might have to have another public hearing, because there, there's gonna be, if there's changes that are made to it that affect taxpayers, you may have, I don't know for sure.
No, that, that's actually, you're only required, that's, I, I'm just, like, I know, that's not the case,
But you may have to.
I wish Steve was here.
but I mean, I think it's definitely, let's wait until, given that Tim has been involved in all of the sewer stuff and all the talks, definitely makes sense to, to have Tim here to, you know, to go through this, so.
And do we then need to leave the public hearing open on the budget before we adopt, before we close it to adopt it?
We, we, we kinda.
We close it already.
It was closed already.
Okay, all right.
It's closed, but we can take, I mean, it's, the, the public can further comment on the budget, right?
Okay. Take her, okay.
I mean, they could do it during the, you know, the public comment, during agenda items, but we are,
The work session on the.
Okay.
Okay.
Today was the last day that we could hold a public hearing, it's like the, the Thursday after the election is the last day.
I understand.
Thank you.
And you actually can't, we can't make, so we actually can't make changes to this budget until we close, have the public hearing and close it. So, we actually had to do that to get to the next step where we're gonna make changes.
Some change, if, if we, if, if need be.
Yes, if we decide that, if need be, but we can't make those changes till we close this public hearing.
I understand, thank you very much for explaining it.
Thank you.
Okay, so if I could get a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Ellam Ray?
Yes.
Ms. Michaelazzi?
Yes.
Mr. Wojcowski?
Yes.